After. Couple of weeks of. Catching up on all of my correspondence and reaching out, having conversation with department heads and. In our, in our department head meetings, um, and in our attorney's meetings and in our engineering meetings and, and building inspections only. I, I suspect that there, uh, it should come as no surprise that there seems to be a, a relatively. Increasing onslaught of applications for solar farms that are outside of what I think the original intended parameters that we established five years ago are. Which is a 20 acre limit. And, uh, it appears as though. We are. In a position to. Reevaluate our policy and make any amendments or changes to that. And I think it's prudent that we start the new year. Um, discussing whether or not the board would like to proceed. And I've taken the liberty to have our attorney send us a copy of a draft moratorium, which a number of other communities in the county have, have used. Um, to give us a, a. Probationary period of time to review and, uh. Change if necessary, uh, our policy and, and zoning on, on solar. A lot has changed in the, in the years since we've adopted this and it was a consequence of a couple of years of hard work. Uh, to come up with what we've had, we've used it now for a little over three years. Um, and it appears as though it's time to reevaluate it, do not only to the, uh. Apparent, um. Holes. That might be exploited, um, and, uh, allow the, the construction of much larger facilities than what the town was, uh, able to approve. Or whether we need to, uh, rescind a 20 acre and, and expand that to something larger. I think it merits a conversation and so in order to do this cleanly and without distraction, I suggest we need a, a moratorium. Um, to just put a pause. In, uh, in place. Over this winter prior to any new construction. We've got a couple in a pipeline already that won't be affected by this moratorium. Um, but it would, it would. Allow us to better consider any future applications on, uh. On land and, and, uh, in this, uh, alternative energy thing. And the second thing, and I was hoping that Chad would be a part of this is that, uh, we originally elected not to have a, uh. A, a pilot or collect fees or tax or any of this stuff. Uh, solar farm because it was our understanding and our opinion and our experience that there would be. Very little expense to the town of Atavia to administer an application. As well as, uh. Administer the application, inspect the applicant, inspect this facility. And, uh, services, I mean, these things generally they need no public service. They don't need any town service, but. Um, it seems to me in my conversation with Steve and, and Dan that, uh, the. Review, including our town's attorney, the time spent where our clerk. Uh, administrative assistant Heidi, uh, Steve, Dan, myself, um. It just seems like every one of these becomes more and more complicated and, and there are, um. Constantly things that we have to chase down and elicit, uh, particularly, uh, with one or two of the projects getting the, um. Decommission bonding and, and some of the other language. So, so some of the companies have been fabulous, seamless, are transparent, they're, uh, dedicated to doing the right thing. And we'd like to use their model as a model of how we move the rest of the programs in the future. So the reason that, uh, I bring this up now is that. I feel that we should have this on the agenda for the last meeting of the year to initiate the calling of a public hearing and. If, if we elect to so move in that direction. And I'd like your thoughts on whether or not this is prudent on your, on your half and. Um, Kathy, uh. Paul, anybody that's attending, um, feel free to jump in with an opinion or questions. I mean, this is a. This is a work session and I'd really, I'd really like to hear from you because I have had, uh, some concerns over the past year. Um, that we needed to tighten things up and we haven't attended to it primarily because. Of COVID and, uh, and certainly, uh, no lack of distractions. So I'm just going to open this up now for general conversation.
Well, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's getting a little out of hand actually, you know, we really need to get a, a handle on it a little bit.
There seems to be a lot of them coming down the pike. We need to. Take a look at it.
Well, the question is, you know, where do we want this to end? Kathy, I don't know. Is there anything or Paul, maybe you can answer, is there anything in zoning that would prevent somebody from coming in and, and add a subdivision of 10, 10 parcels and want to have a. You know, a 200 acre solar farm? And just have 10, 20 acre ones next to each other in a big long row? Right now, there's nothing that would preclude that, is there?
Probably not. I've given it some thought because of the one that Don Partridge is putting in. And I guess someone could do that. The expense would be horrendous because each one would be individual. So I don't know, but I don't know how much money people have. Uh, I've given, I have given it some thought, but when you say there's some coming down the pike, how many? I, I don't know.
I don't know either, but I know that it's better to be prepared. Um, and have a clear train of thought and a clear, uh, agenda that they have to fulfill rather than. Try to figure out how to do stopgap when it doesn't meet our goals. And I don't know if our vision has changed and I don't know that anybody on a planning board. Uh, or the town board has a change in the vision now that we've been in the energy business for five or six years.
Well, certainly can't hurt to take a look at it. I, I'm. I certainly agree with that. Right. I just, I just, I don't, personally, solar is fine. I just, I have a problem with. I mean, how much do we want in our town? We want our whole town to be solar everywhere? I mean, it's getting a little crazy, you know, and people are really.
Again, my understanding was when we first started discussing this six years ago, we did, uh, redid the comp plan, you know, solar particularly, uh, you know, community solar projects, 20 acres or less. Uh, we're going to be limited due to the connectivity available that they needed, uh, they needed, uh, access to a transmission line. Um, solar farms can't be storing energy. You know, they gotta have a connection to a line large enough and that precluded, uh, 90% of the available space from even entertaining a solar farm. Because there wasn't enough energy transmission lines operated by national grid. To accept energy from the solar farms. So I remember that distinctly being, you know, an answer to the concern, oh, the whole town is going to be covered with solar panel. Well, no, because there's a limited number of places where people can connect. But there's been, uh, extraordinary advances in battery storage and we don't have anything in our zoning to address battery storage as far as I know. That's something that I think needs to be done in partnership with any review of our solar ordinances. If they're going to be putting battery stations in, um. They don't need connectivity to anything. They can just store it all up in batteries and run a line as far as they need to to connect. So. A lot has changed and I think we need to be in front of it. And so. I'm just asking.
Just, just a curiosity question, more education for me. When a moratorium is put in and we relook at the rules and how we want it set up. Does that open up the, the gates to? Everything like placement, uh, areas of the town, use subland?
Yeah, I think, I think it's all on a table. If there's a moratorium and we'll, we'll have more answers before I even pursue this anymore. I just want to have a general consensus that a purpose of a moratorium is to. Not accept applications and not move applications. Until we have, uh, you know, a, a revision or, or an agreement on the, on the, on the solar law.
Okay. Yeah, because I, I kind of agree with the consensus that it seems like every few months, the planning board and, you know, Kathy, correct me. It seems like every few months, hey, we got another 20 acres of glass that's going to go up someplace. And some of the areas are kind of like, you gotta be kidding me. That's really, really good farmland.
Exactly.
Well, I, I can, I can support that as a farmland preservation component. I mean, nothing is going to preserve ag land better than a solar farm. You're certainly not going to pave it and it's going to be there whenever you need it to convert back and it's going to be the least expensive conversion of all the energy. Uh, sources out there. You know, we're limited. I mean, it's a, a lot easier to put a solar farm back into production than it is a wind farm, a nuke plant, a coal plant, a gas. I mean. There aren't a lot of other options that allow the preservation of ag land and the continuity with planted grasses, aviaries of birds and, and. Bees and honey production and other things. Um, better than solar. I mean, that's, I mean, that was a whole. A whole long dialogue and it, and I, and in my opinion, solar does a lot to preserve ag and protect ag land. It might otherwise be blacktop paved or, or, or constructed upon. Um, it vouchcases and it is, uh. It's not in production now, but it can certainly put back in production as technology evolves. And I want, I want to include your conversation, Paul. You, you bring up a very valid point. Where are we placing and, and what restrictions should we be considering? And I'm the last guy to support telling anybody what they can and can't do on their land. But at the same time, um. If there's. Things that we can close up or. Didn't apprehend. Um, like stacking several small parcels together.
Yeah, that is, is, you know, planning board member and as a, you know. Homeowner in the town. I agree with, what you said in the first time is what would stop someone from subdividing a hundred acre parcel? Or over a course of two years, taking property off the great lot to make a whole bunch of 20 acre ones and. Going ahead with it. So I agree, take, take a breather, let's look at it again and, and go forward.
If there's no reason to stop that, if there's no reason to, to. Prevent that from happening. Then fine, we, we lose a couple of months. Um, but that's better than not looking at it and reevaluating it. And now is the best time to do it, in my opinion. I think it's winter, it's Christmas is over, two weeks and. We need a project to, to, to tune up. We, we lost a lot of funding for, you know, comp plan updates and egg plan updates, a lot of planning update, but. This is something that I can finance and I, and I just wanted to be. Able to bring it to your attention that, uh. It, it doesn't cost us much to do it and I think it's, it has value and I'm looking for any other opinions or, or, uh, questions on it. And this is in no means a stop or a change in support. I mean. We're an energy efficient community and we do depend a lot on the grant money we get from energy efficiency. We just got $17 million round of opportunity with, uh. A revolving fund. I got a letter from the governor today that there's opportunities to get additional grant money for planning and for sewer and water and energy efficiency and. We've been, we've been, uh, very, very much benefited by that and I don't want to. Uh, send a cold shoulder like we're reneging on our support of alternative energy and being green, but at the same time, um. I think we have a duty to, to continue to update this thing and it's. Hard to believe how many years have passed since we adopted this. It's. It just freaks me out sometimes to think how much has gone under the bridge in, in the time that we adopted this and, and, uh, had all these conversations. It's hard to believe it's been five years. Kathy, does it seem like five years to you?
No.
No, it doesn't.
But it's, that's been when we started, so, um. So that's, that's that part of it. Any other thoughts? Chad, you got any questions?
You got unmute, Chad.
Unmute?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. I was late. I forgot and then, uh, gotten the wrong link for a few minutes. So here I am.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I texted you a couple of times, but I just thought I'd tell you.
Uh, you know, I was running around doing Christmas stuff and all of a sudden I'm like, hey, it's Wednesday at five o'clock.
Yeah, Dan, Dan said you were buying a present for your dog.
Yeah, absolutely. Trying to stay out of the, trying to stay out of the doghouse myself, so.
Yeah, there you go. Smart move.
We were talking about solar, Chad.
What, Patty?
Solar. We were talking about solar, maybe doing a moratorium or something. There's been a lot of solar. Coming forward.
I mean, it can hurt. It's probably like Greg said, it's the time of year where. It might not be a bad idea to take a pause. Certainly coming fast and furious and there are a lot of questions and concerns. I agree. I mean, we, you know, been progressive and, uh.
Well, we are progressive, but there are questions. What does the community get from sponsoring and supporting solar? What is the?
I agree.
You, you, you've been an advocate for that, Chad, and I'm, I, I think it's time that we had a revisit. That's why I put this on the agenda and asked the attorney to send us a draft law, so.
No, you know, I, I, I agree, uh, you know. I'm not really for development for development's sake, uh, you know, I, we're at a point where I think we have to be smart about what we bring into the town. We only have so much land that's available. Um, you know, if, if there's not a, a, a benefit to the community as a whole. Why are we doing it?
Maybe this is time for incentive zoning like you wanted, Chad.
I, I have been on that bandwagon for so long. I would love to have conversations in 2021 about that, how we do that smartly. Uh, reasonably without it seeming like, you know. Towns for sale, but making sure that, you know, if we're going to accept a project in this town and we certainly bring a lot to the table that, um, you know, we're all. Benefiting from that in one way, shape or form. You know, the, the solar, uh, the solar is, it's nice. It, uh, you know, I don't have a problem with it. I'd rather have that than, than wind power. I think that's kind of intrusive, but. And, you know, it's more of a benefit to the landowner and the company that's doing it. The rest of us are kind of. Along for the ride.
Well, it, it can become a hot point. I know the community may be divided on solar and wind and all the other alternative energies, like they were divided on a budget and there's some stuff like that. Um, and to bring that to, you know, to the next phase of this conversation while we're on solar is. Um, Kathy, there's going to be a meeting, um, probably shortly after the first of the year. With, uh, you, me, Andy Meyer, Steve Mountain, Dan Lang, Teresa, so Heidi. We really need to make sure that our public meeting functions and public hearing functions through Zoom. Are up to snuff with, uh, we have to really dive in. Andy's already been tasked, uh, with doing the research of what we actually have to provide or you have to provide as planning board chair. To allow public venue and, uh, make sure that this is considered a part of the public minutes and that it is distributed in public. Um. Like these meetings are. See, we have, uh, Teresa has been. You know, um, making sure that Alicia has this, is, it's on the. Uh, available and it's, it's out for the public to review, um. So that they can respond or comment. And we're going to have to tune up all of our games, both the town board, the planning board, the ZBA. Uh, and, and consider whether or not we need an administrator to work with you like, uh, Teresa has, working for the town, um, that. Someone to just monitor the participants, um. Mute and unmute, make sure that hands, so that the people in the meeting aren't trying to run the meeting as well as operate the Zoom function. So. Just be aware that if you have any, any of the. Planning board members that wish to participate in that, I would certainly, um. Make sure they're available. Or aware that that, uh, is going to happen. I'll let you know of a date as soon as I know of it.
Okay. I would love that. I have a real hard time of conducting the meeting and controlling the meeting.
Well, I know four months ago, I know four months ago, I strongly suggested that you have someone, um. Do that for you.
You did. You, you assigned Sandy and she told me that she didn't need to help anymore, that I was, that I could do it.
Well, you're the chairman. You decide whether you need help or not, not her. If you need help, you need to let me know and we'll find somebody to help you.
I'll let you know and you can let the staff know.
Well, we'll figure it out, but I need to know, uh.
Yeah, I can use help.
Yep. All right then, we're going to see if you get that. Be, be aware that there'll be an invite to a meeting, uh, to get this resolved. We want to make absolutely sure we're as, uh. Up to speed and up to snuff and, uh, I do not want to have any lapses in our, uh, transparency and our commitment to. The law. To give everyone their opportunity to, to be heard. And it may result in a, you know, a, a couple of meetings. I don't know if one public hearing will be enough. Um, for some of these subjects that are upcoming, some of these larger projects, we may need to just leave the public hearing. You know, closed, but open for a continuation. So we'll, we'll have that conversation. I just want you to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. The only other thing we have is, uh. I think we have the, uh. Organizational resolutions, which will be distributed to you, uh, board members. As soon as possible. Heidi and I just finished up tweaking up, uh, those and Teresa has got them segregated out into, uh, different formats. So. Um, if you have any questions, uh, call me Heidi or Teresa when those are sensitive. Anyone? Not want to serve on the committees they served on last year? Speak now or forever hold your peace?
Only thing I will say is you have me down for video and it's Ben Chat.
Yeah, I'll do that.
He's been doing it.
I can continue to do that. It's no problem.
Okay. Now Patty, how up to speed are you on what's going on with, uh, rural broadband, internet expansion and, uh, spectrum and, and, uh. Where are we with, uh? Empire? Where are we with, how are we getting any of these people? I, I, it's almost becoming a daily occurrence. Someone asked me why they can't get high speed internet on their road in the town of Atavia.
What? One question before you answer that Patty. Um, I do know down on Salley Drive, uh, L and M fabrication are. They are getting obscene dollar amounts requested to put internet at that building at the corner of Bank and Salley. And I've been helping them out with their, uh. Oh, Hughes Net Satellite, which basically stinks on a good day. And they are crying to Time Warner, Empire, uh, they've gone to Holly, they've gone to the EDC begging for anything.
Yeah, they're not giving us many answers, to be honest with you.
Well, crossing the thruway is the problem there, isn't it?
No, there's Empire is down where the hotels are. By the federal detention center.
Okay.
So they've gotten over that and I think Time Warner is in that little cluster of houses by the church on Bang Street.
Okay.
Well, it's no different than where I lived. We inquired about it and before the tracks, it's high speed internet. You go to the other end of Donahue Road and people are connected to it. I've investigated it. My son keeps calling there. And they said absolutely not. We will never put it down there. If you want it, it'll be like between 22,000 and $30,000.
Yes, those are the figures I'm hearing too.
Totally ridiculous and my son is willing to do whatever needs to be done to promote whatever we can get. To get it moving. In this day and age and kids having to work remotely from home, my grandson is only, uh, four years old, but he goes to preschool. He's re, he's doing it remotely and he can't even log on from home. With the internet that they have. I even have a MiFi and I can't even connect.
Yeah, I know L and, L and M are actually going home to do their Zoom meetings to sell the big, you know, six, $700,000 harvesters so they can even do it in their office.
Yeah. So whatever, I mean, whatever we as the citizens can do. Um, Patty, if you can find out that would help promote it, we'd be willing to.
I think I'll, I'll get ahold of, well, it's Christmas now. I don't know about tomorrow or the next day, but for sure Monday. Um, I'll get ahold of Cohen and I'll have a discussion with him, our lawyer. It's been representing us through this whole thing. Um, he's, he really does stay up on top of everything that's going on. I mean, locally here, it's kind of the same. It's the same crap you hear all the time, you know. They'll do it, but you've got to pay these exorbitant amounts of money and no citizen is going to pay that.
Patty, it's in our contract though, isn't it? Is it? One, what is it? One and 20? I can't remember the exact, there's a, there's a formula in all of our contracts, correct?
Well.
Is it just for cable or is that for internet too?
For cable and internet, we, they do have that per mile thing and they raised it.
20 health, yes, 20, I think it's, we tried to get 10, it's 20 per, we should A, remeasure. In areas that we think there could be and make them hold to that, true to that. And the other thing is, I got no problem using Time Warner money to, to lay Empire cable somewhere. It's our money. We can do what we want with it.
Absolutely. Uh, we can, we can.
They don't want to do it? Uh, maybe Empire does.
I mean, you've got. Here's another thing. They are going down, we have relatives that are in the middle of like nowhere that are getting it. In some of these other communities and I.
I know there's, uh, we need to reach out to the other town supervisors and see how they're doing it.
Yeah, it might be a damn conversation.
I know Orleans County is and it's, uh, it's a task that, uh, needs to be, uh, needs to be challenged. We need to find out how other communities are getting it, what avenues they're using and, and how are they getting it? I know. Empire is running down state highways and connecting villages and, 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 uh, clumps of communities with, with fiber. Um, and we've had them in three years ago to see how much it would cost to wire up the town. Uh. Other communities are getting hotspots put in and other, other ways. Um, you can reach out, get ahold of Lynn Johnson in Orleans County. She would be a great resource to find out. You know, how to, how to get stuff done.
The other thing we should consider is if we're laying pipe somewhere. We should consider reaching out to somebody and see if they'd lay fiber or if they don't light it up. I mean, if we're digging a hole. Is it worth reaching out to? Paul, you may have a better answer on that. You're more technical, I think, than the rest of us, but if we're digging a hole down somewhere, is there reason to ask them whether they want to lay some fiber in there?
I know that if they can put in a pipe, it's the. Connection to the business or the house, which is the expensive part. But if you use the argument that they don't have to pay the fee to the national grid. For every telephone pole, like the county's paying, I don't know, like 10 bucks a pole per year and a minimum of $10 or 10 years. So if we could get a pipe with our wire in it, we're overjoyed with that.
Okay. So that may be.
Yeah, we've, we've offered in the past to give them duct bank. We would include it in our water project. Super pride will just put spare duct in. Pay for the, you know, pay for the. Pay for the game, but they have a whole set of specs. They wanted in case they tire. They make it, they, they find a thousand reasons to say, no, we don't want anything for free and then.
Right. And they don't come to the meetings either.
But there is, there has been a wave, hundreds of millions of dollars dedicated, federal money dedicated to getting, uh. Rural broadband and high speed internet and we need to find out why we're not at the top of that list.
Okay. I'll make some phone calls.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen? Well, in that case, I want to wish you all a wonderful and happy and healthy Merry Christmas.
Same to you, Greg.
Same to you, Greg.
Merry Christmas.
Very happy to be home.
Yeah.
I'll be spending my, I'll be spending my Christmas Eve in my, in my new abode.
Oh, really?
Nice.
It's not official. They spend a Christmas Eve there, smoke a cigar and drink a bourbon, I hear.
Yeah, that's probably going to happen. Mrs. Post has never been so happy to see me. Until she realized deer season wasn't over. So today is the first day that I've been home. I got, I got home from Wyoming and immediately spent all of my time in the woods, so.
Oh, well.
But thank you all and have a, have a wonderful and happy and healthy, uh. Holiday and, and, uh. Give my, uh. Thanks to your spouses and your partners for supporting you and your endeavors here at the town of Atavia and I, and I really do, uh, mean, uh. I am awed each and every day by how well supported our community is by, by all of you and the staff that we have. And I'll be reaching out, uh. I got a couple more questions, but I can call you guys individually on those things. Um, in the meantime. Have a, a very happy and safe holiday. Have a, a very happy and safe holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah, night everybody.
Good night.